Blackman's Parish School Board for August 5th, 2013, at the Blackman's Parish Learning Center. The invocation will be said by Ms. Cusson and the pledge will be led by Mr. LaFrance. Mr. LaFrance.
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together as we make decisions that affect our school system. Grant us the evidence, the wisdom, and the grace to make proper decisions as we guide our students, faculty, and community to a better tomorrow. In Jesus' name. Amen.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, the roll call, please.
Michael Giles. Nancy Lahay.
Here.
Anthony St. Philip.
Here.
Joyce Lampkin.
Here.
Fran Bye Martinez.
Here.
Carlton LaFrance.
Here.
Paul Lemire.
Here.
Chuck Swallow.
Here.
William Mertz. Mr. President, Cheever Corn.
Thank you, Mr. Rousseau. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda when all the amendments.
Second. Have a motion offered by Ms. Lampkin, seconded by Mr. LaFrance. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. Item 1.05, ad hoc and standing committee reports.
I have a report for the Land and Construction Committee. Ms. Cusson, was this read at the last meeting or... Okay. The Land and Construction Committee met on Tuesday, July the 2nd, 2013, at the Belchase School Board Office. The meeting convened at 1:45 PM. Members present, Nancy Lahay Chair, Paul Lemire, Anthony St. Philip, Joyce Lampkin, and Dennis Rousseau. Others in attendance were Ronald White, Monica Words, Alberta Cusson, Sharon Zaluga, Gordon Tarot, Chuck Swallow, Fran Bye Martinez, Johnny Bartholomew, Jim Tideman, Chris Barker, and Alan Tibbetto with HOV, and Stephanie Calamari, architect Virgus Rome. Mr. White introduced Kevin Morris, Holly and Smith, architects, who went through the final plans for the Belchase High School roof replacement. The cost assessment is 1.1 million and the estimated completion will take about one full school year, this next full school year. Item three, Mr. Morris discussed the Woodlawn School Building demolition hazardous material abatement will cost approximately $970,000 and take around five months. The parish council has documents stored in the building that will be removed by July the 15th, 2013. Mr. White gave an update on the Boothville Venice Elementary School roof replacement. The contract is signed and work starts Monday, July the 8th, 2013. The board received three quotes for the Belchase Middle School roof repairs, and the lowest quote was from Roof Tech for $126,000. Proposed revisions to the PPSB apartment trailer lease agreement was deferred. Paul Lemire and Chuck Swallow discussed the need at the new South Plackman High School for a locker room, weight room, bleachers, and restrooms, and concession stand, and a room for the visiting team to use. An ad hoc committee composed of Nancy Lahay, Chuck Swallow, Paul Lemire, and Tony St. Philip, along with the area coaches, will meet to go over the details. Mr. St. Philip will appoint a chair at the ad hoc committee for these South Plackman High School sports needs. Mr. Chris Barker, HOV, gave an update on construction projects. There being no further comments, the meeting adjourned at 3:32 PM. Mr. Rousseau, have they taken care of the parish taking the records out?
Yes, everything's here.
Any other ad hoc or standing committee reports? Item two, Blackman's Parish recognitions and/or presentations. Item 2.01 is legislative recap of 2013 session. Representative Chris Leopold.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's nice to come to a school board meeting in a beautiful building like this. This is not the first time I've been here, but it's still a reminder how much this area's been through post Katrina. I wanted to come like I did last year after the session to give an update of what we were able to accomplish this year in the legislature. One of the first things I want to start out with is the MFP formula. And last year, you may recall, there was, at the end of the session, I led an effort to reject the MFP, and it was a 51-49 vote. And I had expressed to y'all then that I thought it took 53 votes because it had the effect of law and it needed a majority of 105, not a majority of those present. And the courts threw it out and we were right. And because of that single vote and because of that single legal decision, the MFP reverted back to the previous year, to 2011, 2012. And what that does to Blackman's Parish is infuse about another 1.2 million that never should have been taken to begin with, particularly as it relates to the Type II charter legacy on the airbase. So that was positive for the school system. In addition to reverting back to the 2011, 2012 formula, we were also able to add 2.5% for this year to that formula. But that law that we passed is just for this year. We did pass a resolution to encourage next year to make it recurrent where it does not come to the vote or will the legislature, that it should be every year, a 2.5 bump to help deal with CPI and inflation. In addition to that, and this is the one that I was very pleased with, is we were able to get the settlement paid that you all were owed against the Department of Natural Resources. We got it paid in full. And I have to admit that this would not have been achieved without the help of the senators from this area. We did work together, but they were instrumental, particularly on this issue, in getting it paid. It was not negotiated, it was paid, and it's going to be paid in full. I hope it has been paid in full. So between those three things this year, much unlike last year, you're looking at about an additional $5 to $6 million. And I really know you all will use it to the best of your ability, to the school district's ability, and to, most importantly, to the children's betterment. In addition to that, real briefly, we can't let up on the MFP in the future. And I talked to Superintendent Rousseau earlier today, and we're not going to let up. And while we're on this subject, I can't tell you what a value Ron White is at his district. He was a key, key person that I relied on mainly last year and somewhat this year with his knowledge of the MFP and his background as both an attorney and an accountant was just irreplaceable. In addition to the MFP in advance of next year's session, many resolutions were passed dealing with studies of the MFP. So we really need to keep digging in and looking to see which way this is going to go in the future. Because a year ago, no one knew what the MFP was. Now, a few more people are starting to take note to it, thanks to, not only the help in the legislature, but the school board associations, the teachers' groups. I've dealt with all of them. And in addition to that, there was a resolution passed that made the 2.5% increase, like I said before, not up to a vote, but to be fixed every year, where you all can do what you do best, which is manage the state funds at a local level. One other thing, as it relates to career training and those types of programs, today I was part of an event in Jefferson Parish where they announced the governor came to town in Wagamun and announced a huge expansion of an existing chemical plant. And the fracking with the lower cost of natural gas is driving all this. And after the groundbreaking, we had lunch with the governor, with all the officials. And Louisiana is going to be expected to meet 100,000 additional jobs each year for at least the next 10 years because of the growth, this area in particular, of people, of companies needing, you know, people that can go to work. And we did pass a bill this year that kind of fast-tracked some state money to fund additional community colleges. It was Senator Adley's bill as it relates to community colleges around the state. So now, some of the things that have been done in Blackman's that we knew about before are starting to be done statewide. So we can see, you know, continual movement toward a different route for students other than a four-year curriculum. So we really are at a real good point, and we hopefully can continue, not only to prepare children for college, but for careers to go straight to work. So thank you all. I talked to some of y'all during the session about the settlement, about the MFP. And sometimes you've got to let things kind of work themselves out quietly. Sometimes you've got to be a little bit more paciforous. But I thank you again, and I feel much better at the end of this session than I did last. But again, I thank you very much for your help during this session.
Thank you, Professor. Ms. Cusson's gonna...
Or Ms. Cusson.
We have students that miss too many days due to unexcused absences. And the more they miss, then there becomes a serious academic gap. And it doesn't just start their senior year, it starts back in middle school, and it gets really worse when they come into high school. We would allow students to make up some of that time. If they had way too many absences, they'd come in before school, after school, at lunch. We'd do everything we could at that time to get the students to graduate and stay on track with their cohorts. But that academic gap is getting larger, and these kids are getting more frustrated because in that short period of time, they can't make up much gain. So we had a committee that got together, and we came up with the idea of Twilight School. And the way it would work is students would have the opportunity to make up unexcused absences by making up the instructional minutes so that they could earn credit for their classes, and they do it within the semester that it starts to happen. So the state allows five excused absences. So with Twilight School, on the seventh absence, a meeting would be convened with the parents and the supervisor of child welfare, and a contract would be presented to them where the student would make up the two days they're over going to Twilight School, which would be held at the Learning Center. It would be on Tuesdays and Thursdays, it would be online courses. We would follow their schedule as much as possible. So we would look at what subjects they're taking at the base school. They still have to do the work at the base school, but when they come to the Learning Center and work in Twilight School, it's a two-hour block from 6:00 to 8:00. The first hour, the teacher in charge would help them make up the work they missed for the base school. And the second hour would be spent online on the subjects that they're missing. So they're making up the instructional minutes. They have to make them up within the block that they missed those absences, so they have till, say, December this semester. If they do not, and I've given you the quick notes, and I'm sure you've read them, if they do not, we don't want to give up on them because they're going to get frustrated, they'll drop out, and that will go against the cohort rate. And what good is it? They're leaving school without a high school diploma. So if they don't follow the procedures for Twilight School and make up their instructional minutes, and we're going to catch them before they miss too many, then we go to credit recovery. And at that point, everything is free, the teacher provided free, the tutoring is provided free, but once we go to credit recovery, it's almost like paying for summer school. We would charge $100 fee, and they would continue with the online work. So we're giving them two opportunities to be successful and graduate with a high school diploma. So that's just the presentation. I think it has to come to a vote, so if you have any questions, should I wait till then?
I just have one question. I think I read that transportation is not provided for either. So how would these children, if their parents haven't seen that they go to school and not miss these times, how will their parents get, will they get them there?
Okay, we've had a long discussion, more than once, because we've been working on this program for two months. We felt we're providing a teacher free of charge, we're providing the coursework which is costing us the online, free of charge, we're doing all of our part. We would like for them to do a little part.
I agree.
And come too. And their parents would have to agree through the contract. We figured this won't hit till about October. When we get our first student, we will have to look at if the issue comes up with that travel is an issue. We talked about the activity bus. That would only work for South Plack High because they're close. For Belchase, you'd need a separate bus driver just for that, and then they'd have to wait here two hours.
What if they had to pay...
Phoenix, you would do the same thing.
What'd it cost us for the bus driver? Make them pay for that.
We felt like maybe we could start with the program when we get our first candidate. If that is brought up in the meeting, then that's something we would discuss.
We're going to have to adjust the program as it goes on. We really have to evaluate each individual student, see what their needs are. And if there is an at-risk student that cannot on all means get there, then we're going to figure something out. We're not going to leave anybody out. But we also have those students that just want to sleep all day.
Well, that's the thing.
That do not want to come to school, and we have to give some responsibility to those students and make them accountable.
And you'll notice in the packet, it says, if they're assigned to Twilight School and miss again before they've done their instructional minutes, for every day, it's two days of Twilight School. And Mr. Thornton has graciously agreed to facilitate this, and Mr. Thornton, for years, did adult GED, and he can get people to do things, you know, and really push them. So we thought he was a good choice for this program. And the coursework, we needed it for course choice, we needed it for accelerated pathway. We can use the courses for other programs. And I'll talk about that when I get to course choice item on the agenda.
I love the idea.
But that is one of our biggest issues. We had many meetings to discuss that.
Thank you, Ms. Cusson.
Thank you.
Item 3.0, board members' time for non-agenda and agenda items. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Anderson and his staff for the wonderful refreshments and hospitality. School's looking real good. And before he sneaks out, we'd also like to thank Mr. Leopold again for all of his efforts, and also our senators for their efforts in the district. The money's going to go a long way to helping this district get to where we want to be. We had a couple of board members also that wanted to say a couple of things. Mr. Lemire?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to mention two local people here in Port Saff, Tanya and Greg Gibson of Gibson Services. Saturday, had a free school supply giveaway at Diamond Park. They also had like airbags and different stuff for kids to play, and snacks and all. It was free. This is the second year they've done this. And they had four LSU football players there signing autographs and playing with the kids. And one of the football players is Lorenzo Phillips, and he's from the big city of Grand Bayou, but he plays for LSU. So I just thought, you know, it was nice. I wanted to mention them because they also give scholarship out each year at South Plack High School. So I'd like to, you know, thank Tanya and Greg Gibson from Gibson Services. Thank you.
Ms. Lahay?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Rousseau and the board if, beginning, you know, now and in the future, if there's some way that we could recognize all retirees.
You're right, Ms. Lahay.
You know, at a board meeting, have them come, stand up, give them a little, some sort of a little certificate that appreciation for their years of service, and give it to them. You know, just the retirees that have, that are retiring from...
There's been quite a few lately, and we had to recognize them. Davy, not Ken, many forever, and a lot of others.
A lot of others.
And I agree.
And just bring them here, they're on the camera, and, you know, just let them know that we can't give them a gift by law, but we can at least...
We can give them a plaque, though.
We can give them a plaque, they do.
And I agree.
And we can recognize them, and I think they'll feel like that we appreciate their service.
No doubt.
Okay, that's all I have.
Good idea, Ms. Lahay, very good. Also like to bring to the attention of the public, schools are getting ready to start. So please be aware of the speed limit. Children are going to be running to catch school buses, parents are going to be running late, things are going to be chaotic, so please pay attention, please watch your speed. School students are going to be catching the bus and out in public, so just be careful. With that, we'll move to the next item. Item 3.01, executive session pursuant to revised statutes 42:6.1A, two strategy sessions or negotiations with respect to litigation.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Second.
A motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any discussion? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to make a motion that we return from executive session.
Second.
Got a motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. Lemire. Any question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously. I'd like to mention that there were no decisions made in executive session. Item four, superintendent's comments and reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. Announcement of property tax mileage renew at September 9, 2013, school board meeting to be held at South Plackman's High at 6:00 PM. Mr. Ronald White.
Hi, good evening. At the next meeting, I would ask that the school board adopt the property tax mileage rates for this coming year. There was a change in the law this past legislative session that requires that an announcement be made at a public hearing between 30 and 60 days prior to the actual meeting when the property tax rates are adopted. So I'm here tonight to make the announcement pursuant to the law that we'll do it next week, I mean, next month, which is actually 35 days from now.
So it's just a public announcement?
Yes.
Okay, discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of budget adoption schedule 2013, 2014.
Included in the board packet is...
Excuse me, Mr. White.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need to have a motion.
We need a board.
So...
Have a motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Ms. Lahay. Mr. White?
This schedule for adopting this year's budget is very similar to what we've done in the last two years since I've been with the school system. Most of this is things that I need to do, but the important things is that on August the 19th, I would like to have a special board meeting preceded by a finance committee meeting to discuss the budget. The special board meeting is used because it's somewhat a formality, but will also be discussed in the budget. The law requires that the budget be presented to the school board at a public meeting. So that's the reason for the August 19th. By doing the schedule this way, we meet all the legal and statutory requirements and deadlines, and it also gives me the maximum amount of time to prepare the budget based on last year's numbers as we close out last year. So I'd ask that we go along with this schedule as presented.
Special meeting on August 19th?
Correct.
At 4:00?
At 5:00 o'clock.
5:00.
With the...
I'm thinking it's at 4:00.
The finance committee meeting preceding that at 4:00, where I can go into a little more detail about the proposed budget.
Does anybody have a conflict with that timeframe?
Where will this be?
I'm assuming at BCO.
BCO.
Then if you're on the finance committee, will you please try to be there?
The 19th, yeah. Is the 19th a Monday?
Yes. Two weeks from today.
8:00.
And the reason that the dates fall that way is because it has to be available for public inspection for so many days prior to the meeting at which it's adopted. And it has to be adopted by September 15th. And it also has to have a publication in the paper that it's available for inspection by the public. And the paper comes out on a Tuesday, so the way it all fits in by doing it the day before on the Monday, we can then have it available for public inspection for the proper amount of time, starting the following day.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion appropriate action in regard to renewal of Medicare Advantage policy coverage for retirees effective...
Did we approve that?
Well, we didn't vote on that, Ms...
Y'all had a vote on it?
No, we did not. Any other question on item 4.01, 4.02? Any other question? Any oppose? Then the vote passes unanimously.
Okay, I'm sorry. Discussion appropriate action in regard to renewal of Medicare Advantage policy coverage for retirees effective January 1, 2014.
So all for discussion?
Motion offered by Ms. Lahay, seconded by Mrs. Martinez. Ms. Martinez.
This is the Humana 65 Medicare Advantage Plan that we have for our retirees. The board pays for 100% of the premiums for this because the board ends up saving money by retirees going with this plan instead of our regular Blue Cross plan. Two years ago, the rate was $215 per month. Last year, the rate went down to $179 per month. This year, the proposed rate for 2014 is going back up to $204. So it's higher than last year, or higher than this year, but it's still lower than it was two years ago. There's really no change, virtually no changes to the coverage itself. There is maybe about a $4 a month fee that's related to the health reform law.
Mr. White, do they, I know with my Medicare Advantage Plan, also there's dollars taken out of the Medicare check. Are these people that were on Medicare, or are these people that were prior to paying into Medicare, what, these retirees?
I'm not sure that I know the answer to your question. I think that, I think you have to be on Medicare in order to enroll in this program.
In this program?
So I don't know if that answers...
So are they, well, are they paying their, like, mine went up to 104, I think, that is taken out of my Medicare check before it goes to the Advantage Plan? Are these people also paying that, is what I'm asking?
Medicare...
I think that the, I'm afraid I don't, I called it my dad.
That's okay, I was just curious.
No, I'm not sure that the Medicare rates...
In other words, is the insurance company, in other words, Humana gets my money that they take out of my social security, go straight to Humana for me to have Humana? So does their Medicare money go straight to this?
No, I think that the retirees pay for their Medicare coverage, and then the board pays for this to supplement that.
So this is a supplement to them? It's not a Medicare Advantage Plan? It's a Medicare Supplement Plan?
They refer to it as Medicare Advantage Plan. Humana does.
Well, then that's altogether one, so...
But the school board pays for the 100% of these premiums. So I'm not sure that any of this is charged to the employee at all, or the retiree.
That's not the question, though. Is it the insurance, or is it a supplement? Because I have to probably pay two different things.
Yeah, a Medicare Advantage is a plan that, that plan takes your Medicare, that they take out of your check, your social security check, and they pay it to this plan. A Medicare, with a Medicare Supplement, is a supplement to that, and then the board picks up the money for that supplement. So at one time, we did offer both. Do we offer both, or we don't?
This is the one that, since I've been with the school system, this is the only one that we've offered.
Okay.
Is this Humana Plan. And they refer to it as a Medicare Advantage Plan.
Yeah, it's Advantage, and it's all in one, and they get the money from the person's social security. But some of these, I don't know if all these people qualify for social security. Yeah, it's Advantage and it's all in one, and they get the money from the person's social security, but some of these, I don't know if all these people qualify for social security. Some of them did, I don't know, like, old, older employees.
Probably don't, yeah.
I bet they don't either. Well-
After a certain year, they had to pay FICA, which was them Medicare-
But used to, they didn't take social security out.
When I was working, they didn't.
I was just curious, how much is their total, 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 between the employee and what we're paying? That, what is the insurance company receiving between what we're paying and what Medicare pays them for this employee's coverage?
I'd have to look into that. To my knowledge, they are getting nothing other than the premiums they're charging to us.
Okay.
Dennis. We have to vote on it.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry about that, I'm daydreaming. Any, any questions? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, I didn't want to jump again. Discussion appropriate action regarding to approval of awarding of a contractor low bidder for the East Bank Housing Project, Phase One roof portion of project. Mr. White?
On July eighteenth.
Excuse me, Mr. White.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Ms. Martinez.
On July eighteenth, we had a bid opening for the first phase of the East Bank Facility, Housing Facility renovation, which is really just the roof portion in order to secure the building while it's being further designed. And it'll be worked on, the Phase Two will be the rest of the renovation project. We had two bidders, Kuzon Services and Robert Wolf Construction. Kuzon Services was the low bid at two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, and I asked that the board approve awarding the contract to them for Phase One.
Any other question?
That's, that's not you, Ms. Kuzon.
No.
Better not be.
I asked, I asked the same thing at the bid opening, when somebody mentioned the name, I said, huh?
They're gonna come after you.
So any other real questions? Any oppose? Then the vote passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action regarding to approval of sale of buses and other vehicles.
Did you see how much money we're gonna get for those?
We put a, one, two, three, four, five.
Motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Ms. Martinez, and a late second by Ms. Lahay.
We put ten vehicles out for sale and had a bid opening on July the eighteenth. All the vehicles, the, the high bid on all ten of the vehicles exceeded the minimum bid that we put out, so it would be legal for us to accept all of these, and we'd ask that we accept the, the high bids on, uh, in the board packet, it's the yellow highlight, highlighted-
I think it's all nice.
Numbers, and so, uh, we would be happy to get rid of these and let them go on their way. The total amount of dollars for all ten is about forty-two thousand dollars.
Got half a box of that. Okay, any other question?
I thought I figured, hi.
Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action regarding to approval of bid results for a new intercom system at Bootville Venice.
On Wednesday, July-
I'm not saying anything anymore.
I'm sorry, I knew you have to excuse me.
Can we have a second to this one? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, motion offered by Mr. LaFrance, seconded by Mr. Swallow.
On July twenty-fourth, we had a bid opening for the new P.A. system, intercom system at Bootville Venice Elementary School. We received one bid from Education Electronics Corp. for a hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. I was told that we've worked with them before and we're happy with dealing with them, so I would ask that we, that the board approve us having these people install our intercom system at the school.
Is that the, uh, is that throughout the entire school? Is that just the after-school gym, too, or just the everything?
Everything.
Any other question? Any oppose? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. White. Uh, next, four point oh seven, consideration of a resolution to hold a tenure hearing. I'm recommending this to the board, and we can meet at the next school board meeting to discuss this.
Would you mind if I offer? Uh, we need a motion offering, uh, offering, often hold a tenure hearing.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion offered by Ms. Lahay, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any question? Any oppose?
Yes.
Have one opposition noted by Mr. LaMaire. Any other opposition?
Yes.
Have another one by Mr. Swallow. Any other oppositions? Then the motion passes with two opposition and four for it, five for it.
So it passes.
So it passes.
And the, um, motion was to hold the tenure hearing on September fourth, before y'all could change that between now and then if you wanted to change it, but that gets more than twenty days of the law.
That's Labor Day?
No, Labor Day is Monday, that's a Wednesday.
Okay.
So we, that's fine?
Uh, it looks like it's gonna be okay for that date.
Five, okay.
Time to be determined?
Y'all determine. Y'all be determining, maybe at the special meeting or, or, well, we might need to do that tonight. Usually five o'clock, six o'clock.
As the actual five for all the voting.
Yeah, so we get five-thirty or six o'clock.
Let's do it for six o'clock, normal time.
All right, for me, I'll type that in, just give me a moment. Okay.
All right.
Where is this gonna be at?
Yeah.
Is there a predetermined place? I didn't note that it was-
No, sir, I, that's all, the resolution is blank, so I could fill it in after. Y'all make y'all's determination that you would hold a tenure hearing, where it would be. It could be at, it could be at the Belchance Office, it could be at the primary.
BCO Office.
WCO.
BCO.
Oh, BCO, is it big enough?
We had it at, um, one before, at the primary at that-
Multi, multi purpose.
Multi purpose building, is that-
Oh, okay.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Works for me.
Is it big enough, though, for?
No, it's not.
Yeah, that might be too-
This isn't big enough, though. Good thing Mr. Giles isn't here. We'd be rubbing knees here.
Okay, I got it, typed in now.
Okay. That passed?
So it's all in agreement now, I can go ahead and close this motion out?
Yes, ma'am.
Ready? Discussion appropriate action regarding to school board provided daycare. Ms. Kuzon?
Can we have a motion, please?
So offered for discussion?
Motion, motion offered by Mr. LaMaire, seconded by Ms. Martinez.
Where is that? I gotta get to the-
When we did-
What number is that?
We were first awarded a grant right after the storm, and we took some of the money and we put it toward, um, putting together the daycare center that we have now. And the plans were to build it into the new school and also use it to provide a childcare certification where students could leave with that certification and go right out of high school and work in daycare centers. And they could do their internship right in our daycare centers. Well, we're almost to that point, and the plans were, we could not charge as long as we were in a building paid for with the grant funding. But once we moved into the daycare center, we could charge, and we did do a lot of research. Since we started building the school, we went to public school daycare centers where they do something similar to what we have. And as a result of that, we came up with this plan. The money provided for this would be to replace things as they wear out. In the building we are in now, we had, I think, four cribs, not one baby slept in them, and we've already had to change them out because the regulations for the cribs changed. So this would be used to replace toys, instructional furniture that they have there, um, cribs, it, it's not, we're still nonprofit, it is just to replace things that-
Is this a one-time fee, annual fee?
No, it's monthly.
Well, why did we, the original thing that I saw, there was a charge for students also.
Okay.
Now, that's been changed.
Yes, because Mr. Russell came to me and he said that, I think he had spoken to members of the board and that you did not want to charge the students.
No, I didn't want to charge the teachers, or I wanted to charge the students the same price as the teachers. I, I thought, when we first did this, it was an incentive for teachers, and now to come back, and I understand the grant is gone, but to come back and charge them a hundred and fifty, and a student seventy-five, I didn't think that sent a good message to the teachers. This is, well, they've made it even worse. Now, it's teacher, you pay a hundred and fifty, students, you pay nothing. I have an even bigger problem.
From day one, the parents knew, once we moved into the new school, that there would be a charge.
But why don't the students have to pay? Why do the teachers have to pay and the students don't?
That was my decision.
Well, I'm asking.
That's my decision.
But I'm asking.
I felt that, uh, the students, we should make it as accommodating as possible to them. They don't have jobs, the teachers do have jobs, there is income coming in, and a hundred and fifty dollars is nothing compared to the five hundred and fifty or more that they pay in other areas. There's gotta be some responsibility to this daycare. That is not all free, but to the children, it should be free, and that's, that's what I felt.
Now, for the students, we felt, as, as part of my Circle Grant, we did write into there that any student that has a child, they some, normally start school where there's, uh, they aren't at the language development for school readiness. So this would allow us the opportunity to get those red, those language development skills up to par, so that when they do start kindergarten or head start or pre-K, they're, um, they have a better chance of success. So that was another reason why, as part of the Circle Grant, we included that they would be allowed to attend the daycare center, but yes.
As a board member, I would just like to know more about it. I don't know anything about this. It popped up when I was going through my packet. I called several board members, they didn't know anything about it. I don't know where the fees came from. I didn't even know we were gonna take students' children. I don't know if we have insurance. I don't know how the students are gonna get there with their children. How are the children gonna get there? What are the rules for them visiting the children? I, I don't know any of that.
The day-to-day operations is the responsibility of the administration, and that's what we're, we're doing.
It's our responsibility if we're sued. The school board is sued, not the administration.
It is, but it's our responsibility, uh, to set up the day-to-day operations of the daycare center, and this was always in the plans. The, the, it was always in the plans, they have the daycare in the school-
Maybe I'm old and I forgot it, but I knew it was an incentive for employees, the daycare. When I remember, it was wonderful, offer them daycare so that it would be an incentive for teachers. I, that's, you know.
And always, and always have, if, if, you know, you're not having many, many students with children.
You could have.
But if there is, well, you could have, uh, but what, what has the past shown you? Uh, no, it's, there's not many. And if you, if you're servicing two or three, that's gonna be a lot, but I mean, I think it's our responsibility, if we have the daycare then, to provide the services that are needed for those children.
I agree to keep them in education.
How are they gonna get there?
That, that's, that's-
That's the responsibility of the parents, to get them there. We're not gonna bus them or anything.
Right, that's, that was my, that was-
We're not gonna bus them, it's just like the responsibility of the, of the teacher.
And, and, and what are the rules for their children being there, not only for the, the students, but now that the children of the teachers and the children of these students may be in the school? I don't wanna encourage this. I don't want it to be a glorified thing for students to get to go visit their little baby.
That's not gonna happen.
Well, we don't know that.
Yeah, it is, it, well, I'm telling you it's not gonna happen, because those students will be in classes.
Could we defer that when, we, they get lunch breaks and stuff, don't they? I mean, we don't know that. Is this something that's written somewhere that they can't?
Well, they might be able to if they take the class.
Yes.
To take the class, they'll go in there and have parenting classes with, with the child.
Now, can anybody take the class even if they don't have a child?
Sure, of course.
If they want the childcare certification.
Yeah, we're trying to give them the childcare certification. It's a course in the curriculum.
'Cause there is no daycare services down here, so this would provide an incentive to where these students could go out and work for a daycare center, and we're still, it's still an incentive for the teachers because-
Well, that's a little bit, you see, I, I didn't know anything about that, we didn't, I didn't know this, and, and I mean, I was kind of blindsided, and then I, I tried to ask other people and they, they couldn't tell me any more than I knew. So, I mean, if, if we could defer it for further discussion to know, so we can get, you know, what it is really, what we're doing, because, you know-
Could we discuss at that special meeting, Mr.?
Well, when you have, when you have other people's children in, in your school, same way with the off, I'm sure, with the little, uh, building that we had prior to, but I don't know if there's a difference so far as liability when you bring them into the school. I don't know that, but I know a regular daycare outside of the school setting, there are some very strict regulations when you start bringing in children of-
We will have to change our license, and we have to change it by August nineteenth or stay with the old license that we have, so we've already looked into-
So you will be licensed by the state as a childcare center?
Yes. They've already come in and, and they're just waiting for us to tell them which license we need to go with.
Now-
If the school would be further in, say, opening in November or December, we'd have to go with the old license, 'cause we couldn't wait that long. But, um, because we're so close to moving into the new school, no, we've met every reg with the present license, they've already talked to us about what we would need to do for the, um, second license of a regular daycare center where the number, we can take in more kids, and all of that has been, all that research has been done, and we're just ready to do the paperwork.
Now, do you have a right of, in other words, if it would happen two years from now, that I know that by the state right now, ever so many children, you need another adult? So do we have, do we have right of refusal, or would we be forced to, if, if we, would we be forced to hire another adult?
Teachers have first preference, so they get the slots first, but yes, that would include hiring another adult if the numbers get to that point. We're not at that point, and I don't think this year we will be at that point.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to ever be there.
How many children are we anticipating?
Well, right now, we have, I think, five. We're thinking it may go up as high as fifteen, but it depends on the age groups as to where you need to bring in another person. If we would ever get more babies, you need more, um, and we're anticipating two babies, so we're good for the, I think, for this year.
Now, can't these students get help with funding for childcare?
Anytime you do that, you're opening it up for the federal government to come in. It's different regs than what we have now.
So do we want to defer this, or do we want to go ahead?
I mean, I'd like to defer to get more information, but I don't know if they have time, you know. I mean, I'd like to defer it to get more information, but I don't know if they have time, you know.
When is the, uh, license due?
I think it's August 19th.
And that's the day that you have a special board meeting?
We wanted to kind of get this done, then we're gonna put together a childcare booklet. We're ready to go with it, so we can finish the booklet, bring it to you, and you can look at it.
Yeah, and we have guides.
But, once that, once it's done, I mean, it's too late for us to say, woo, you know, because at the end of the day, we're, the board will be responsible.
Well, this part needed to be put in the booklet, is, is, I guess, but we can defer it, and if you have a list of questions you want answered, you can send them to me.
Has anybody checked that our insurance was?
That was my next question.
Are we covered?
I didn't, no.
I think you better check, that's gonna cost us.
If we're already operating a daycare center, then they're, they're aware that we have daycare.
But, are they gonna be aware there's gonna be in, in your school now, in your new school?
We'll, we'll let them know.
Yeah, let's ask them and see.
Ask them that, 'cause there might be some regulations from the insurance.
The liability part of the insurance.
The room is set up for us, right, Mr. Wolf? So, yeah, it's probably better.
Oh, it's regulation, square footage, everything.
Now, what's the maximum this area that you've set up for children that can be there?
You have like over 2,000 square feet, is it?
It's a pretty good size.
It's a lot more than 50, yeah.
There's, uh, four, four classrooms, so if you have...
Well, see, that's...
Ten per classroom would be, you know, 40.
You're never gonna fill that up.
Well, you're not, but never say never, so, I mean, you, you have to be, uh...
Now, does, does the daycare in school have a kitchen of its own?
Yes, it will. Well, if we get, stay with the license we have now, we're not allowed to. I mean, you can heat up what the parents bring. We are, if we move to the next license, parents have, can provide, bring their own lunch, or that they can put money in the account and the ca, we get the food from the cafeteria. Something similar to head start.
Did we take children of students at our previous daycare?
No, because it was too small.
Okay.
We were worried that we would not have enough room for teachers' children.
Okay, then, I, I would like to have, I would like this deferred for discussion because I, I do have some things that I would like to bring up.
Okay.
What about the license?
I have family members that have run nurseries in Lafayette, and, uh, there are some things that we really, really need to talk about.
Okay, well, um, do you want me to set up a meeting with Ms. Bergeron? 'Cause she has been dealing with the state and knows all of this before, um...
Or, and maybe have someone there that has run, uh, she's never run a, a, a facility that has, um...
She runs it now.
Children, but she doesn't have students' children. She only has teachers' children. And that may not make a difference.
It's not.
It may not be any different. A, a child is a child.
Um, the school that we did, uh, go to visit, they had children, uh, students' children.
Students' children, right.
And the students were required to go there, um, during their lunch break or whatever, and spend quality time with the, the child. And the daycare center provided activities. It was almost like parenting classes.
That's what I call it.
And that's why if we don't charge, I would like to require that they attend, head start has some good parenting classes, that they attend one or two, depends on how many the head start has, as a part of this, so that they can learn some skills with raising a child.
Let's defer it, move on.
Uh, is it okay with the first and the second to defer this until the next meeting?
I offer it.
Okay. Second?
The only thing is, can, can it really wait? I mean, can we get the license while I approve all of this?
I think you have the license already.
We have the, no, that has to get, no, they have the license. We would have to switch to a different kind of license.
If we don't approve this tonight?
No, I think we have time.
We have time? Okay, let's defer it.
Okay, then, defer.
The only thing that is affecting, I mean, are we gonna charge? And if the students, that seems to be the two things that are...
I'm gonna make a recommendation to board, then the board can vote on it. Simple, thank you. Well, we are 4:09.
4:09, Mr. Wolf.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to the approval of Twilight School. Uh, you've already given that, so we can go to 410. Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of local changes.
We have to defer Twilight School.
We only had a, we had a presentation.
Oh, okay.
So, offered to approve, second, Twilight School.
Got a motion offered by Mr. LaMaire, seconded by Mr. Swallow. Any question? Any opposed? And the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, now we're at 410, right? Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of local changes to the GED program. Ms. Cousin.
Mr. Marco and I made a deal. If I did the prayer, she'd do the GED proposal. But, she and Mr. Van Nissen have worked really hard to put together a program that we feel will better serve our students than the present GED program that we have. So, it's some changes we'd like to recommend.
Can we have a motion, please?
So, offered.
Motion offered by Ms. Lahey, seconded by Ms. Martinez. Mr. Marco.
The committee started this discussion last summer in regards to meeting the changes of the GED, which it's going to be aligned to Common Core. Um, we're gonna align that test format and change how the models approached. Um, and we want to provide post-secondary linkages for the students. All the research we've done this past year shows that GED is a dead-end diploma without those linkages, without that post-secondary link, linkages. We did a lot of research in Rhode Island, Key West, and the Midwest, and they have found that if the linkages are formed within the school, then success will happen as citizens. Um, our non-traditional students often cannot visualize long-term benefits from short-term struggles, so that's where we went with this thought process. Our strategy was to create an environment of, for the non-traditional student with the post-secondary. Our linkages will be with the community colleges, business partners, and the United Way. Um, once they make the appointment here at PPLC, they'll be assessed. And within their readiness set, they'll go into one or three paths. The first path is jumpstart. Once their TAVE assessed, if they're under, uh, fourth grade reading level, they'll go into that intervention piece. If, um, they're fifth through eighth grade readiness set, they'll go into a transition readiness, uh, intervention set. And if they're ninth through 12th assessed, then they go into the GED. So, we're setting up interventions to get them ready for that Common Core GED. Our elements that the vision from Mr. Van Nissen and Ms. Cousin was to give them many opportunities for success. And the first one we're gonna do is a mandatory orientation. The orientation will be a review of all their data from the base school and the expectations of the GED program at that point with the counselor. Um, the counselor's a big part of this. Um, we will have also quarterly team meetings to discuss performance, performance indicators for both academic areas and behavioral areas. We'll be collecting through the whole quarter qualitative and quantitative data. And how we're gonna do that is this way. RTI will be progress monitored academically and with behavior. The behavior RTI, um, team will meet monthly, and it's a, it's a whole group effort with the care center, our behavior interventionist, our counselor, um, it's a whole team effort. The onsite behavior interventionists will consist of students meeting with the interventionists to track the management, behavioral management plans, the expectations, that qualitative data that needs to be presented at quarterly meetings. The second major component is the academic RTI. We'll use a blended transition model where we embed Carnegie units. The classroom will be set up in multi-level learning environments, so your second grade readiness set, they'll be in one area in an intervention setting, whereas your upper levels will be moving forward towards taking the test. Also, what we're gonna do is we're offering certifications with that upper level, so it gives them something to work towards. OSHA 10, TWIP card, customer service certification. All these are in place with our partners already. Um, also, we've decided to put, look and have a student workshops, um, with business partners, with transferable skills. Whenever I work with PABE, that's the one thing they talk about, those transferable skills, work ethics, going to work on time, shaking hands. So, we'll have workshops embedded, uh, we already set the dates for that, uh, after this approval. Students are TAVE assessed quarterly to attain that quantitative. So, you have the qualitative with the behavioral interventions, and you have the quantitative with the academic. And it's all kept in a portfolio to show growth. Does anyone have any questions?
Sounds good.
It's, it's a model, we're, we're very proud of it. It's, there's not one in the state yet, so, you know, each, we're also gonna have PLCs with the GL, with the GED team to see where are our gaps as this year progresses.
Okay.
'Cause we found students just said, okay, I wanna apply for the GED, but they don't all come with the skill sets. So, that's why we developed the three levels, so we can try and push them into a step they can have some success. And I still work on job skills for them, right?
We found that there was a gap in service, a communication gap. So, with Ms. Cage in place, we, she'll be having, uh, constant communication with the base schools on, so we don't lose students for that dropout index.
Okay, good enough.
Any other question? Uh, any opposition? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Discussion appropriate action in regard to course choice. Ms. Cousin.
A lot of changes going on, and especially in the secondary. Um, I'm sure you've been hearing about course choice. They're already out of money. There's a waiting list. The, um, BESI provided a lump sum of money for them to provide vendors for course choice. And they're already out of money, there's a waiting list. I'm sorry?
Ours is coming on Twilight instead of course.
Oh, but a little note I gave you, I'll use Twilight again, because it's the same as course choice.
You got something like this with the list? 'Cause the courses are gonna be, we're gonna use them for different things. So, rather than us go hunt for vendors to provide the opportunities for students to get these courses, we, um, joined a consortium for a minimal fee. We were offered a, a group of online courses, and I think you have a pick, uh, a copy of that in your packet. It's about 50 courses that we have access to, and we only pay $20 a license for a student. So, what we felt was, we could use these courses, number one, for course choice, which we would have to do for Phoenix this year anyway, because they do not have enough students to offer a foreign language to provide a teacher, so we're gonna do it through course choice. We will also use course choice for Twilight School, where they'll take their English, their math, whatever courses they're taking at the base school, online. And we can use it for accelerated pathway, so it's a very inexpensive route for us to go to offer these courses. So, I think for course choice, uh, you may have been given the sheet that showed the courses.
The very same, all I gave you, what you sent me, the same as Twilight.
Ours is exactly the same as Twilight. Yeah. It's just a list of courses that we can offer through course choice, which we're required to do by the state. And we're not going through the state because they're out of money. So, we would have to look for our own vendors.
Now, does this connect with Twilight?
Okay. When a student has to make up their instructional minutes, they need to work on their coursework, but they're gonna be here. So, we not, we cannot provide an English teacher, a math teacher, a foreign language teacher. So, we can match up the standards that they would be teaching in the base school, and they would do the online course. So, we'll get the best bang for our buck this way. And it actually costs, um, I think, $1,500 to join the consortium, and it costs us $20 a license. Whereas through course choice, the classes are running $600 to $800. LDS is running $700 a course. We can easily do it this way. And we'll start with Phoenix, where we offer Spanish as course choice here.
Any other question?
If I keep the kids more interested.
I made a motion on the other side.
We don't have a motion on the table. Okay, can we have a, a motion offered, please?
So, offered.
Motion offered by Ms. Lahey, seconded by Mr. LaMaire. Any question? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Discussion appropriate action in regard to approval of 2013-14 District Pupil Progression Plan. Ms. Martineau.
So, offered for discussion? Second.
Motion offered by Mr. LaMaire, seconded by Mr. LaFrance.
It's that time of year again, pupil progression plan, and it's our local plan that's aligned to the state laws and to the BESI policy. It outlines our placement, promotion, retention, and remediation policies that we practice here in the district. And the State Department gives us a template, and we just fill it out. So, I've given you, there's three changes. The first one, it's on page 24, I think you have a, a handout. It's, uh, they want us to describe the criteria that determines if a student is retained in fourth grade more than once because of LEAP. The only time that we will retain a student, we will only retain them in fourth grade as a result of the failure for the LEAP. If they will go, it's kind of hard to explain. We will retain them once as a result, provided that they attend LEAP summer school and retest. If they don't make it that first summer, we will retain them. They have to go back, they go the whole year to school, they take LEAP. If they don't make it then, we, we keep them that summer, we test them again. But, if they don't make it, we test PPLC and we send them on. We look at other things, interventions, evaluation. We're not gonna keep them.
So, you just send them on to the next grade?
But, we will provide support. There's got to be a reason, they have tested four times. There's something else. So, we will provide something for them. We will really, we never have that, but you have to put in your policy just in case that would happen. So, that's what we have in our policy. Any questions on that one? Okay, and then on page 55, it's a first through fourth grade grading change. What we're gonna be doing is, uh, spelling and handwriting grades are gonna be averaged in with the English grades. Then on page 61, end of course, we want... The end of course grade will count as 25% of the final grade, but to be exempt from taking that, we want to have, we added that parent signatures are required on all exemptions.
I'm gonna ask for that.
And... Question?
The, the, we, we, yeah, we, we, yeah, we, we, when you say it's gonna be averaged in.
The handwriting, they don't even teach handwriting. Well, but you see, in grades first, second, and third, they were required to put a handwriting grade on the report card all these years. They haven't had formal, but they would like give one grade a week. On handwriting. So, first, second, and third grade, one, they'll take whatever the grades they have, it's gonna be one grade, and it's gonna be averaged in with English, and spelling also. So, what are you thinking? I'm thinking if they've never been taught how to really do their handwriting properly. But, now, we do, they do, in kindergarten and first grade, they do have the handwriting books, and in second. I know that they don't, they don't have those big formal lessons.
Your kids don't, huh?
Because there's not time. So, you're thinking that there shouldn't even be a handwriting grade? No. Okay, this was... No, but I know this is state, I'm implementing, yeah. And this is what, we had all the committee meetings with the parents, and this was what came out of those meetings. But, I can take a note, and we can, for next year's book? I mean, I just was...
I mean, I just was wondering, I mean, I haven't seen.
Just so I wouldn't bring down the grade of spelling and English because they're terrible.
No, it's not gonna. It, it won't.
That's what I was thinking.
It won't.
Okay.
And I think, and, and the spelling also is going to, it's going to be better this way because what was happening is they were putting so much emphasis on spelling and not on the creative writing and the.
I agree.
The evidence-based writing, that now they're going to have time for all that.
I agree. That's a good thing.
If this, if it looks like it's not working, we're going to, we're going to.
This is a good thing.
Figure it all out. We're going to make it work. Okay? Y'all feel better?
Yeah.
Good way to explain that, Pam.
For many high school students, I probably had a handwritten note.
Oh, no.
Thinking that, no, everything's written.
I know.
Or they might text you.
You could thank your.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
They're forgetting how to spell because of the way they text.
I know. But no, it's not going to, I think it's going to be fine. Because we really, we've been talking about this now for about three years. And we've just hashed it over and checked with other districts and.
I love the spelling in English.
You know, looking at Common Core. Then on page sixty-one, the EOC courses. To be exempt from that, parent signatures are required on all exemptions. Because what was happening sometimes is a student would say, well, I don't want to take it. But mom and dad may want them to take their, their final exam. And also students, our special students who meet the LATU participation prior to taking the first EOC, their test scores will only count as five percent of their final grade. Where regular students, it counts as twenty-five percent. Really, this is all state mandated. We just put in about the parent signatures be required on all exemptions so that parents know what's happening. Once this is approved by LDOE, we'll put it on the website, just like we've done, did this past year. That's it.
Okay. Any other questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Discussion appropriate action in regard to approve the Head Start Program Information Report. Uh, Mr. White's going to do four thirteen and four fourteen together.
So offered. Second. Have a motion offered by Mr. Lafrance, seconded by Mr. Lemare.
Ms. Mommy's out of town. She asked me to present these two things. The first is a report that's included in the board packet. Uh, actually, I volunteered for her. The first is a report that's produced by our Head Start program that needs to be approved by the board and submitted to the National Head Start program. I think it, I think it's a yearly thing. So I just ask that be approved.
Uh, we have a motion on the table, yes. Uh, any questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously.
Monthly Head Start Budget Report.
That is included in the board packet.
Thank you, Ms. Mommy.
One month, one month, I'm going to go out of town on a Monday. We have a board meeting, ask her to do it for me.
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you, Mr. White. Approval of Board Consent Agenda.
Have a motion offered by Mr. Lafrance, seconded by Mr. Lemare. Any questions? Any opposed? Then the motion passes unanimously. That was approval of Board Consent Agenda.
CC. Tell Felicia congratulations.
Item six, information items. Do we have any information items?
Just, um, I've got the latest, the big maps.
The redistricting maps?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And, and they're eleven by seventeen. I only had time to print one set. If y'all each want a set or you want your set, just let me know.
Yeah, I do. People ask me and I don't know what to tell them.
Okay, um, item seven, citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments? No citizens' comments, then we move to item eight, date, time, location of next meeting. Next meeting will be September ninth, two thousand thirteen, the South Black High in Fort Salford, six P.M.
Fort Salford, South Black.
Well, are we going to be in Sunrise? Okay, then. Then, uh, the meeting will be at the new high school. How's that?
Oh, cool.
All right. Sounds good.
Are we having the dedication?
According to Ms. Calamari, everything is in order. We're going to be there. Okay. Yes.
Are we having dedication?
Are we going to have the, uh, the dedication and the ribbon cutting and all that? We will, prior to? Okay. We'll have to set something up for a timeframe to, if, in case the media and everybody want to be there to take pictures and all and.
Is it Sunrise or there?
Okay. Okay. All right, so Ms. Beulah needs to be aware of all that so she can set it all up.
Beulah, you know?
Yeah.
So we're going to call, call this Sunrise or, or the address here or.
The actual resident school is Bureau.
Fort Salford High School.
Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
A motion, I offer a motion to adjourn.
Motion offered by Ms. Lahey, seconded by Ms. Lampkin. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.